Okay, we have all the meeting orders and regular city council meeting on January the 22nd. And I don't see any groups as far as recognized, but we also have a part of our agenda to receive any input from the public. So I think there may be some people here that would like to address the council. So if you have anything you'd like to address for the council, we'll be happy to let you have the floor.
Good evening. I'm Shawna Shekel. I was out at 505 South 6th Street. And I'm here to discuss the ordinance for B-2019 Chapter 92 for the cemetery. I would ask that the city council would reconsider the second reading of the ordinance to raise the rates for the cemetery. I mean, at close of business today, you could get a cemetery plot in the back portion of the cemetery for $450 and in the front portion for $500. And if you all vote tonight on this second reading, then that's going to go up to $850 for the back plot and $950 for the front. I understand that the last time that city, that the plots were raised, the prices of the plots were raised was in 2012, and it went up $50. For county residents, it's going to be $1,200. And if you live outside of the county, then it's going to be $1,500. I have issue with that, too. What about people that grew up here in Barstown that decided to leave after their, getting their education, college degrees, and they can't make the money here that they can make other places? Or they decided to join the military and they retired closer to a military installation to receive their healthcare benefits and a bunch of other things. They go along with the military, but they love their hometown and they want to be buried here. I think that that's a smack in the face for somebody that has served their country to have to pay $1,500 to be buried here. And I know, my husband's retired military, I know. I can take him to Fort Knox, but that's not his choice. He wants to be buried here. So I'm sure there's other military people that feel the same way. So my question is, I mean, the mayor was at, I want to get where he was at, Mayor Heaton. You're at the Rotary Club, and I quote, "Mayor Dick Heaton defended the change by saying Barstown prices were so low that people were coming down from Louisville and other places to buy barrel plots for the rock bottom price." What happened to the word "no"? To me, I voted for you all sitting here. So I should be your first priority as a citizen of the city of Barstown, not those people that are just calling around price shopping. And so I would just ask that we have a gradual increase, maybe, over the next couple of years to get to where we need to be with the prices for the plots. I mean, I've got a comparison here where in Springfield, St. Dominique's and Holy Rosary, their prices are $600, no upcharge for out of city or county. Willisburg is between $800 and $1,000. Bloomfield-Mapel Grove is $650. Danville is $390 for residents and $624 for non-residents. Elizabeth Town is $225. And Councilman Hibbs just enlightened me that their restaurant tax is higher and they do another taxation. So maybe, you know, that's why theirs is so low. But that was one of the comparisons that the city was able to get. And then, for the life of me, I can't understand why we're comparing to Louisville-Cavehill or Louisville-Evergreen. Our cemetery doesn't offer the things that they offer at Cavehill or at Evergreen. And Cavehill is $4,000 to $10,000. And Louisville-Evergreen is $2,495 to $6,995. So that one right there, I think, the Shawna Shekels, I think that that should be struck from the list. I think that if we're going to do a comparison, it needs to be a comparison of a city just like ours or close to ours. But I would request, as a voting citizen, that you all do not hear the second reading of this ordinance and put it into effect for the citizens of Barstown. Because people woke up this morning and could get a plot for $450. And then we go to sleep tonight. And if you all decide to vote on this and it passes, then it's going to be $850. So I just request that you all go back to the table and discuss this a little bit further and give people a chance to be able to come up with this, with this money. I mean, the cemetery committee had the meeting on the 14th of November, and then you came and presented it at the first meeting, and hopefully I'm not speaking, of the council. We've got two new council members. What do they really know about it? Because they were not on the cemetery committee. So I just really request that you all go back to the table and discuss this more. And if we have to have an increase, okay, but not at this time. And preferably, a gradual increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Shawna. Anybody else like to address the council and change the subject for another subject? And Shawna, I appreciate your concern and what you're talking about. I would just like to say that at the last meeting, we probably didn't cover a lot of the financial challenges that the cemetery operation is facing in great detail. But I think we are tonight. So to help you all maybe better understand our decision making. Last year, we lost $20,000 operationally running the cemetery. This year, we're on track to lose another $20,000. The two years prior, we barely broke even. So we have had three changes to the cemetery prices in the last 10 years. We raised them $100 in 2001, $50 in 2004, and $100 in 2012. So those three raises. So as you can see, the raises have not been able to maintain or keep pace with inflation operationally. It costs us about $100,000 to take care of the cemetery. And one of our goals, I think, which would be the goals of the people in the community is everybody who has relatives or family or loved ones, that's their final resting place. They want that cemetery maintained in a pristine manner, in a very dignified manner, today and 100 years from now. So the reserve account that we've, we have some reserve account that we've been able to balance the budget when we've had an operational loss the last two years, that fund only had $85,000. So, you know, that will cover a lot more operational losses. We had budgeted a columbarium for $20,000, which is something that many cemeteries are going to because of so many people using cremation. That also helps extend the life of the cemetery. We haven't been able to, you know, if we spend $20,000 on a columbarium, then that's going to eat up that reserve account that we have. Up until now, you know, it's been kind of a user fee operated department, needing to take the revenue from the sale of lots, that's taking care of the operational cost. But as you can see, over the last two years, that's not covering it. So the other side of this financial equation is that, you know, we're going to have a commitment to make, you know, for the next 100 years, to maintain that cemetery the way it is today. Because even as nicely as we keep, we still get a lot of complaints from people that they have high expectations of how they want to maintain. We're averaging about 83 lot sales a year over the last 10 years. We've got about 800 lots remaining to be sold. So if you do the math, that means in 10 years, we'll probably be out of lots and also be out of revenue. So what money is going to maintain the cemetery after that? Right now, we take 20% of every lot price is put into a trust fund for maintaining this cemetery perpetuity. That fund has $174,000 in it today. Well, obviously, 10 years from now, you know, right now, we're putting about $7,000 a year into that fund. That's another $70,000. You have, say, $250,000. That won't maintain that cemetery very long. So the new, the new rates that we're talking about, that will create, based on my estimates, about $25,000 in additional revenue. That will offset the operational losses that we're currently having. It'll also put about $7,000 a year more into the trust fund for the maintenance of the cemetery long term. Now, I can't speak for all the other cities on how they budget their cemetery, if they have them like this, if they rely on the sale of lots or whatever. But the bottom line is, any loss that you have in this maintenance, you're going to have to be facing for the next 100 years, 200 years, however long Barstown's going to be. That's going to come out of the general fund. So these, all these cities, and you named all the ones we have, we looked up a few others since we got that information that you shared with us, Shawna, and I appreciate that. Nicholasville is $900. Mount Washington is $3100. Campbellsville is $1,295. There's a cemetery owned in Campbellsville by the funeral home. They only, they charge $500, but the funeral home owns it. Shelbyville is $800, $1,100, and $1,500, depending on where you're buried in the cemetery. And then Elizabeth Town has two other cemeteries besides the city one. Elizabeth Town Hardin Memorial Park, $1,050 or $1,650 if you have an upright two, two-person marketing. You have to buy two lots at a time, so you can spend $2,300 to $3,300. And then Elizabeth Town Memorial Gardens is $1,100 to $1,295. So a lot higher than the city of Eaton. And one thing that separates those cities from us is how their general fund is funded. All of us have our property tax and occupational tax. Each of those cities has an insurance premium tax of anywhere from 5% to 10%. Barstown is one of the few cities in all the state of Kentucky that doesn't have an insurance premium tax. That money goes into the general fund. So you can imagine a city like Danville or a city like Elizabeth Town, if you have another 8% on all the insurance premiums coming into your general fund, that is a huge amount of revenue that you could use to fund operating losses, you know, in a cemetery. We don't have that. I don't think anybody would advocate us going to that type of thing. So, you know, that's, that's part of the whole, you know, equation in terms of financial. The ordinance does give the sexting a lot of discretion to address some of the things you addressed about. If you have a military person that's not stationed here and hasn't wanted to come back. So there, there's discretion built into that to address those things. You know, I understand that if I lived here all my life and I was in a nursing home for five years in Lexington, I don't think we would make that person, you know, paying out of county rate. So we've got some discretion built into that to address that concern. So, you know, that's kind of the, the big picture. You know, 10 years from now, we're going to have to pay all the upkeep of this cemetery going forward to the tune of, you know, even if we save some money, it could be $80,000 a year. Plus, we're going to have to find land and design and build a new cemetery, which is, none of the funds we have available now in the cemetery budget is going to take care of that. So that's another pressure we put on our general fund. And right now, the general fund, as you know, we've went out and purchased new land for this much-needed expansion of our fire department, public works, and so forth. Police department's going to need money fairly, I think, in the fairly near future. So those are millions of dollars in obligations to the general fund that we have facing us right now for some very, very important services that we provide. So you add on another, a new cemetery and all the design and all that goes into it, it won't be paying for itself, you know, from day one, because it just won't. You can see there's a lot of financial issues here at play. And we don't make this decision without a lot of review and discussion. Yes, the new council members didn't have all that information when they first came in, but they have had that information now for the last few weeks as we shared more information with them. So that's just all the financial background I could share with you. You know, one last thing for the general fund. I know probably everybody in this room would love for us to have a much nicer interior or inside recreational facility for not only the young people in this community, but the senior citizens and everybody else. You know, you're popping about a $6 to $10 million facility. Again, the general fund is just not in position to fund that kind of investment either. So it's, you got to weigh all this. And I think after you compare all of the rates with what we are proposing, we're in line with our, our neighbors. And your point about the gradual thing has merit, but we've done that three times in the last, you know, 10 years, and it hasn't kept pace with inflation. This will take care of the operating losses we're facing. So that's kind of my financial explanation for some of it in more detail than you had, you know, when you came without the information and that we had in our last meeting. So I'd ask the other council members would like to talk to this point, this point, before we get into the rest of the meeting.
Just a couple of things, Mayor. Just so we can understand, you know, what some of our maintenance things are at the cemetery. Now, some of us probably don't think about all this, but, you know, we have tumors to repair, we have just clean up all the time. We mow, we keep up the roads. We have a gazebo that needs upkeep. We have fencing, tree trimming, new plants. And then we also pay a sexting to, that's just some of the expenses that we accrue up there every year. And I have to agree with the mayor that the money that we're asking for the sites is not going to take care of all these expenses, but it's going to, you know. And we are a little bit, I think we are a little behind on where our prices should be at this time. Had we been doing it gradually, we'd be right, I think, wherever we are. I think we didn't mention, too, that I think in comparison to our neighbor there, St. Joe's is asking $850 for a lot on there, too. And they're actually going through a study. I hope I'm not speaking out of place here. But theirs might even have to go up even more after their study comes back to find out where they need to be. Because they have a goal to, I think, is to get enough money in the account that will maintain that property when it's all filled up.
Right. To that point, I spoke to one cemetery that talked about this perpetuity obligation you have to operate the, you know, take care of the existing cemetery and plan for another one. And they had done a pro forma, and they said, their pro forma showed they needed $2 million in their account. The existing cemetery would go, you know, be completely sold out and to be able to use the interest off that, maintain the current cemetery, and then have enough funds available to purchase land, design, lay out the streets, and all the flat of the lots in their new cemetery. So it's, you know, it's a $100,000 a year budget doesn't sound like a lot, but when you're going to have to maintain something for perpetuity, there's a lot of financial obligation there. So any other council members have anything else they'd like to add to this? Okay. Then we'll move into the rest of the agenda. Okay. We have a sewer main extension for the Tom Ballard Company on Springfield Road at Miss Jessica. Would you like to walk us through that, please?
Yes. The Tom Ballard Company, as a result of the road widening for the US-150 project, is going to be taking their office. So they're going to be relocating their office to what I assume that they call the home place. They're the White House there that sits behind Walmart. And that currently doesn't have sewer access. So as part of all things that are going on there, they're proposing a sewer line to serve this house. And it will also have the ability to serve some future lots if they so choose to divide that up at a future time. But it will actually connect in to the proposed Round Creek sewer trunk line that we are proposing and had a public meeting on just prior to the city council meeting. So we're kind of planning on that to go hand in hand. And this would allow them to move forward with that, with that process and move forward with their plans to do, to move their office space and be in compliance with all their requirements for the transportation cabinet. And we've looked at the sewer design, and it meets our requirements and is something that we would then take over upon its completion.
Okay, thank you. So tonight, we need to have a motion in my counsel to accept this into our system based on meeting our criteria for design and build.
Yes, yes, sir.
They get a motion then to accept the sewer main extension for the Tom Ballard Company on Springfield Road per the recommendation of the city engineer.
So moved, Mayor.
Yeah, motion by Councilman Williams to have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Doams. Is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right. And we have the 4KV conversion project bid tab. Eric, you want, I know we met on this, we talked about this some at the last meeting, but also in our electric cable committee meeting. I think this is really a recommendation to not accept the bid.
Correct.
Go ahead.
So the first time we've bidded, our low bidder was just over $1 million. We thought that was too high. And in talking to some non-bidders, they said our timeline was too short. So we rebid, extended the timeline almost by a year running into next budget. And rebid, that low bidder sent us a letter saying they had received more work in the past month and would not be bidding. The two bids that we received were in fact higher than the previous low bidder. The Groves Construction, they bid the exact same price, and the Five Star Electric came in higher than them. So it, when we expected it to decrease below the $1 million, it in fact increased with the rebid. So in looking at some hourly rates that we've been paying over the past couple of years, we're looking at canceling the bid on unit-based rate and going to an hourly-based bid for the next go-around. Using that, and then by expanding the timeline over the next year, using our own crew and some overtime, maybe we can work, we feel like we can be able to get the whole job done more, a whole lot at lower cost than at these prices.
Eric, go ahead. Have you already got somebody mad that you might could do this hourly wage?
The contract that we've been using locally for the past couple of years has been Hamilton Power Line, but some of the contractors that we've bid have said they would be interested in an hourly wage. But the comparison that I've ran with Hamilton Power Line, who's we've used for, we used it during the ice storm back in November. So we compared kind of what their typical, you know, per pole cost was in hourly rate versus time of material versus the unit rates that we got. And these unit rates are just so, the, the cost for wages right now in the contractor market, we're realizing is just so high that's driving the unit-based rate. So it's, it's kind of where it is right now.
So what, what actually price range do you want to be? Right to $1 million or less?
We were hoping for less than $1 million, especially with some of the units, you know, some for a simple pad mount transformer trains out where contractors estimating $7,000, we think we can do it in half an hour, you know, for, for our crew. So it's, we think that we can lower it by, you know, we haven't done a study on it, but we're going to at least focus on the south end, which is a priority because of the Barton substation. Do that for the next, until it's complete on an hourly rate. You know, we know that Jack Miller and I will be, you know, over on them every day because it's, you know, going hourly to check in with that drive for their unit base. So we'll track it and be on them, do a daily lock sheet, and see if it is in fact, you know, cheaper through that first project before we do the other three areas.
So your recommendation is that we reject the low bid from way of growth because it also, besides being high, it's higher than our budget amount. So we don't have a budget. So I mean, certainly those are, that would be grounds for rejecting, I think, those bids. Hopefully going with your recommendation, going away from the unit price to the hourly and utilizing some of our in-house people to help get the bid within, something we can handle budget-wise.
Yes.
Do I have other questions? Eric?
So the motion needs to be cancellation of this bid or needs to be rejection of the low bid?
I think we would, rejection of the low bid because it exceeds budget amount. And give Eric and them opportunity to rebid it and hopefully get it in within budget. Is that the motion?
I'll make the motion then if it's, if it's appropriate to, for the rejection of the low bid for the 4KV conversion project for the city of Barstown.
Second.
A motion of a second.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Shekels. At the end of the discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carried.
Question, Mayor. Do you want me to also cancel this bid since it's going to be reissued in a completely different format?
It's kind of, we rejected it.
We've done it before. We've, we've rejected it and then canceled it.
You think we need another motion then to cancel the bid and then rebid it? Because I guess we are going to change the parameters of the bid, so we could probably do that. So I'd say we also have a motion to cancel this bid on a unit price basis and then allow the department to rebid it using a different criteria to help get it within, within budget.
I'll make the motion, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Williams.
Second.
Second by Councilman Doams. Any other discussion? Thank you, Mayor, for that recommendation. All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion for cancellation is carried as well. Okay. The next item is, we have a number of HRB recommendations. Do we have any recusals on this?
Mayor, I may need to recuse on 158 and 186.
Yeah, because that's the same job.
I sit on the board.
Right, okay. So would you like to recuse yourself now? And we'll check those two up, and then we'll bring you back. We'll ask City Attorney Audrey Hayden to read the summary recommendations from COA-18-158 and COA-18-186.
And COA-18-158, Don Parrish, applicant, St. Vincent de Paul owner, request to install doors at 310 North Second Street. Recommendation, approval to install a proposed door. COA-18-186, Reverend Terry Bradshaw, applicant, Archbishop of Louisville owner, request to install a fence at 310 West Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed fence.
Okay, thank you. Can we have a motion then to approve the recommendations for COA-18-158 and COA-18-186?
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Buckman to have a second. Second by Councilman Hibbs. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Okay, Audrey, you want to continue with the rest of the recommendations?
Okay, thank you, Mayor. COA-19-01, West Banco applicant, owners, propose to install door at 315 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the door. Conceptual review, no action was taken on that one. COA-18-95, amended, Jacob and Katie Hall applicant/owners, propose to keep the installed windows at 209 West Flagee Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed windows with the following conditions. Conditions that the final Mutton design would be staff-approved by the preservation coordinator before being installed.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. We have a motion then to approve the recommendation of HRB for COA-19-01 and COA-18-95.
So moved.
A motion by Councilman Hart. You have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Sheckels.
Mayor, if I could add to that, with the conditions set forth?
Oh, sure. Yeah, we have a motion, a second with the conditions set forth, uh, on the recommendations on COA 19-01, 19-01 and COA 18-95. Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. All right, um, we have minutes from the, uh, special council meeting of December 27th. There is a reason they're here is for, there was a correction, so, uh, Mary, do you want to speak to that?
Thanks to Councilman Hart's clean eye, fresh set of eyes on the minutes. She pointed out that I had mistakenly had Councilman Doams making, um, the first motion and the second motion on one of the HRB rulings, so it's the very last page, um, and I just struck Doams and added Sheckels, which was, um, the accurate second motion, so, let's see, there might be something similar in that as well. I think there were two instances.
But anyway, Councilman Doams did not first and second that motion.
It was Doams and Sheckels.
Okay.
So, apologize for that error.
All right, so that's the only thing. Yeah, these are, these are for approval with the corrections and then we also have the regular council meeting, um, of January 8th. So the corrections or additions. I'm gonna go ahead and ask for a vote since the special meetings have been corrected. I'll ask for a motion to approve the, uh, special council meeting 12/27 with corrections and also the regular council meeting of January 8th as presented.
Mayor, I'll make that motion to, to, uh, approve the review of minutes for the special council meeting on 12/27 with corrections as well as the regular city council meeting on 18.
Okay, thank you.
We'll make it again.
Motion.
I'll take some pressure.
I'll take some pressure.
Take it easy on me.
Mike, he'll do it.
We have a motion, second. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Woo! Thank you. Okay, uh, the next item on our agenda is our financial report. Uh, as Tracy Hudson is gonna, I guess, talk, uh, a bit about the audit.
Uh, yeah, there's just three areas that I'd like to point out, which are important. Um, page 21, which it hasn't in there, it's unassigned. We always call it, but in restrictive reserves for the general fund, it shows, uh, 702,000. Uh, two years ago, it was 139 and last year it was, um, around 36,000, so it's good to see it's back up to 700,000. Uh, the other area, um, is also the unrestricted reserves on page 26 and as for the combined utilities, it's, uh, 4.2 million. It's down because of the money borrowed to purchase the land that all the utilities and the general fund are gonna pay back. And then another page is 71, that's your income from operations. Um, all departments were in the black except for water. The water even looks better than it did last year or the year before.
What was the first page you, you mentioned, uh, Tracy?
21.
So all in all, it's pretty clean, pretty clean audit. We didn't have any glaring exceptions that she pointed out when I, when I read it.
Yeah, it was pretty clean and it was clear.
Anyone have any other questions of Audrey on the audit?
Tracey.
Um, excuse me.
You can ask him if you want.
Sorry about that. That's your forte. All right, thank you, Tracy. All right, uh, I think several of the department heads are gonna have to talk about the, uh, first reading.
No, it's Tracy's.
I'm sorry.
The council have to give their blessing on it, just to show in the minutes.
Okay, you need to approve the audit? Okay. I'm sorry, um.
Mayor, my, maybe in order, I'd like to approve the audit for the fiscal year 2017, 2018.
Okay, so most of our approval of the audit as presented for 20, fiscal year 2018?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Williams. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Uh, now, uh, the next item on the agenda is a first reading for the, uh, there's been a lot of recommendation for some changes in personnel and several departments along. Um, as we bring it up, uh, start with, uh, we've got finance, police, fire and cable on internet, so I guess Tracy, you've got, uh, excuse me, recommendations?
Right now, we have, we have four, all our time customer service reps. Traditionally, those are now being used as reception, so we wanted to move them strictly to reception because they are not, they shouldn't be paid what a customer service rep is starting out at.
Does, um, the changes have an impact on the budget?
No.
So it's just sort of, because you've been rotating a lot of those people in as receptionists.
Right, but, um, with the, right now, we have three part-time and two of them are strictly reception.
So they shouldn't be actually listed as receptionists there.
Right.
Okay. Um, I think we'll just go down the line and, anybody have any questions of Tracy on that? Okay, chief, uh, police chief has recommendations, uh, to change the title of the company to police captain to assistant police chief, is that correct?
Yes, sir. It's just, it's just a, a name change. It's not gonna affect, uh, the, uh, the pay grade or anything. It's just going from captain. Most, uh, agencies our size, the, basically the rank of captain is, is pretty much, uh, not used as, you see assistant chief, major slash assistant chief in agencies our size in the roles and the positions that, uh, they are fulfilling and it's just a name change is, is the only thing that we're looking at.
Okay. Any questions for Chief Cresson?
So it's, it keeps the same pay grade, and you have two.
Yes, sir.
It's a captain, assistant chief, Sealy and assistant chief, Thompson.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then in fire, Chief Malley, you want to walk us through the recommendations for changes to captains and, um, dropping the designation for lieutenant and, um, firefighter area teams?
Yes, sir. Uh, with our, with two stations, we currently have three lieutenants that are in charge per shift. Like to make them captains. They'll still be in charge of the station they're assigned to plus the other station, but I need someone also in charge of that second station. So this is like an entry level and they'll be made lieutenants and they'll be promoted from within the department. Uh, as far as doing their pay, we can make some cuts in our budget. It shouldn't affect our department budget at all.
Yeah, you spoke to us, I think, the last week about this recommendation, this coming to this.
Yes, sir.
I think you said that you were gonna say, I think primarily you did say mostly that the overtime costs, changing the salaries that are taken on, responsibility.
Between overtime and the, uh, 5320 part of our budget, it's kind of a catch-all. We're looking at like a thousand dollars more a year. Sustain that out of those areas.
And a lot of this is driven by the fact that we have two.
Correct.
Stations now.
That is correct, yes.
Okay, then you have, uh, lieutenant, uh, this, that position's gonna be eliminated, eliminate training lieutenant and then also you reduce the firefighter area team from 10 to 9.
Great. Uh, we, uh, currently have a lieutenant that is signing to training and that area wasn't going the way I would really like to see it go, so that gentleman is being moved to a 24-hour shift as a firefighter and we're gonna redo our training, how it's handled and what's, what's done with our training paperwork and so forth. Uh, between myself, assistant chief Spalding and the new three lieutenants that'll be covering the training area.
So we're gonna be down firefighter?
I will be down lieutenant in a way because if, currently I have myself and an assistant chief and a lieutenant, well, that lieutenant spot's gonna be gone, but we're still making three lieutenants for the shift work. I know that's a little confusing.
I think, Coach, we're not, I mean, so it's the same amount of personnel, it's just the titles are changing and they're moving, uh, moving around. When it goes from 10 to 9, that's because he's moving up another, into a lieutenant's position and that reduces the amount of full-time firefighters, but it, it'll still be the same amount of personnel as a whole throughout the firefighting.
Doesn't reduce the number of personnel that would actually be working.
It does not reduce the number in the department, just the numbers in that particular position.
So this will have no effect on our ISO?
No, sir.
No, sir. All right, and then last would be cable and internet and Eric or Jeff, you want to help you off there?
I'll help you. This basically came about from Mike Powell retiring and we needed to create, um, a construction manager, a position that Mike Powell, um, did for years and years and, um, so the, basically we've taken, uh, his job and divvying it out across existing employees. Um, Shane's been working with Mike Powell for a long time and, and he's, he's picked up and been doing pretty good and so, but his title is needed to be a little different just because of how it happened. So that's why we're, we're proposing and asking that we create this position, uh, for a cable, uh, manager. Basically, he'll be in charge of all the construction the city has, all activities and extensions and all, all the fiber projects we've had around town. Um, the other change we're, we're special proposing is that we increase the cable techs, uh, three to four. Basically, we used, used to have three technicians and four installers. We're proposing that we have four, uh, technicians and go down in number, installers to four. It's just the normal evolution of how things have changed in terms of, uh, you know, our, our needs for more technicians and, and, and less installers. And finally is, uh, we're proposing that instead of three part-times for the IT support specialist position, the folks that answer the calls as they come in, uh, we're asking that instead of the three part-times, it would go down to two and then increase the full-time from two to three. Uh, we're tasked with other, keeping up with other parts of the city's network at the same time also answering calls and so when, when one of them leave the phones to take care of some other requests, then, you know, the customers are, uh, waiting, you know, on the phone. So we, we thought that would solve that aspect of that problem as well and we also have a need for, um, keeping up with the fiber maps. We've been making a lot of changes and so we, we certainly feel like we can have another, uh, we can make use of that additional help by changing the, the one part-time to a full-time and reducing the, the number of our tasks.
Is this, is this gonna have an impact on the budget because it looks like we're going from 13 to 14?
Um, because of the retirement and there's a position that we don't think we're filling, we don't think it'll, it'll impact the budget. I think we'll stay in budget. We're on track as it is and so we should be okay. Uh, we don't, we don't think it's gonna go over.
The whole, the part-time, the, the part-time people that you have, are they the ones that just manage the, the after-hours service calls?
Right, they're co-ops generally, they're there, uh, from one, between one and three o'clock and then they usually stay, you know, until eight, uh, and also cover most of the weekends, uh, the weekend hours.
They're all covered by part-time people?
Correct.
Well, I think what you're saying is with the growth in the internet, IT support demand is, is growing as is the number of customers we're serving. It's kind of, it's hand in hand that you need the customer support.
I guess we don't wanna leave away, you know, funnelize, you know, get the problems resolved and, and take care of.
Okay, any other questions on the home? Good thinking, home. So this is, uh, we, I actually have to, this is the first reading, so I would ask, uh, council member introducing it and have, uh, our city attorney read it and, uh, this is the first reading.
Mary, can you do that? Um, I'd like to introduce, uh, B 2019, summary of classification compensation and ask your city attorney if you can read it, please.
It's a little bit confusing the way it's laid out, so I'm gonna do the best I can to read this and make sense. Summary of ordinance B 2019- classification and compensation plan. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended, an ordinance styled, quote, an ordinance creating classification plan and compensation plan, end quote. This ordinance amends chapter 35 employment policies, the classification plan and compensation plan of the municipal code by amending the number of authorized positions, their title and pay grade and setting the ranges for pay grades for city employees for fiscal year 2019 through 2020 and subsequent years. The amendments in addition, reflecting number of positions, title and pay grades respectively, are: Finance, striking four, inserting two for position, the number of positions; customer service representative, one, two, three, part-time, grade 103; inserting two positions, receptionist, part-time, grade 102; Police, two positions, striking police captain, insert assistant police chief, grade 116; Fire, striking one position, inserting three positions; Captain, striking fire marshal, insert shift commander, grade 112; Striking one position, lieutenant, training, pay grade 110; Striking ten, insert nine positions, firefighter slash EMT, grade 107; Cable slash internet, one cable position, cable superintendent, strike grade 121, insert 120; Strike three, insert four positions, cable technician, three, grade 113; Strike five, insert four, cable installer, three, pay grade 109; Strike two, insert three, IT support specialist, two, grade 108; Strike three, insert two, IT support specialist, one, part-time, 104; And then adding one position, construction manager, grade 115. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication and summary as required by law. I certify that this summary was prepared by Audrey Hayden, city attorney.
Okay, thank you. It's the first reading then, um, thank you, Audrey. Uh, the next item is the, uh, second reading that was proposed to be 2019-01, chapter 92 Cemetery. I know we've heard from, uh, Ms. Sheckels and some other discussion by the council, so I'm just asking if, uh, the council still would like to have a second reading and if so, I'd ask someone to, um, for a motion for a second reading.
There are, okay. Motion for second reading on ordinance B 2019-01, chapter 92 Cemetery?
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Doams, is there, um, I think, and then we would like, uh, it to be read, I think, as well, before we have any discussion.
Ordinance B 2019-01, chapter 92 Cemetery. An ordinance amending and adopting as amended, an ordinance related to chapter 92 Cemetery of the City of Bardstown's Code of Ordinances. The city council of the City of Bardstown can help you does ordain as follows: That amendments be made to chapter 92 Cemetery, section 92.02, how divided and sold, fees and charges, and also section 92.07, unused or transfer of lots, and to add, section 92.13, definition of residency for purposes of purchasing cemetery lots, to the City of Bardstown's Code of Ordinances as follows. Section 92.22, how divided and sold, fees and charges. A, a tract of land described in 92.01 shall be divided and set apart as heretofore to wit, see copy of platte filed with sexton. The cemetery is laid off in lots slash rows and sold at the following rates: Striking subsections A through E, inserting A, single lot in sections 1 through 6 and 13 through 18, city resident, $950; B, single lot in section 7 through 12 and 19. 18, city resident $950; B, single lot in section 7 through 12 and 19 through 34, city resident $850; C, single lot in any section, Nelson County resident $1,200, non-county resident $1,500; D, baby grave or cremation grave $250; E, opening and closing for grave Monday through Friday $500, Saturday through Sunday $700; F, opening and closing grave for cremation $250; G, opening and closing for baby grave $250; H, transferring ownership of a grave, administrative fee for grave transfer $50. Inserting, fees are to be evaluated annually by the cemetery committee and any changes are to be recommended by the committee to the city council. Subsection B, full graves purchased prior to an actual need shall be refunded at one-half the cost of the strike current, insert, purchase price upon transfer to the city. Receipt of the original purchase shall accompany the request for refund. Insert, excuse me, if no receipt exists, the cemetery sexton may use his or her discretion in determining the purchase price. No cremation or baby grave purchased prior to actual need will be refunded. Section 92.07, unused or transfer of lots, subsection B, no transfer of any lot shall be permitted except upon the record books and with the consent of the city council. And the deed of conveyance made, signed, approved, and recorded as aforementioned shall be conclusive proof of ownership. And no person shall have the use of or title to any lot until the same is paid for or satisfactorily arranged. Insert, after conclusive proof of ownership is provided to the cemetery sexton, the city may purchase the lot for a price equivalent to half of the purchase price of the lot. A new lot may then be purchased at the current listed price. And then adding subsection 92.13, definition of residency for purposes of purchasing cemetery lots. In order to establish residency for the purposes of purchasing a cemetery lot, an individual must present to the cemetery sexton documentation of his or her residency status. Residency may be established by presenting a government-issued photo identification listing a current address and a piece of mail addressed to the individual at that address or any other documentation deemed acceptable by the cemetery sexton. If extenuating circumstances exist, it shall be at the discretion of the cemetery sexton to determine the documentation that may be accepted to establish residency and slash or waive the residency requirement. This ordinance or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith are repealed to the extent of such conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law.
Thank you, Audrey. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Seeing this is the second reading, so I'll ask for an individual vote. So all those in favor, say aye. Starting with Councilman Domes.
Aye.
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 Motion is carried. Thank you. All right. We have, next item is reports of staff and committees. Eric proposed electric upgrades, which we discussed at the Electric and Cable Committee meeting last week.
Sure. This is informational. Last November, we had an ice storm. City Hall was out of power for about 10 hours. And anytime that happens, the, our cable head-end overheats because the AC load, it is not backed up by our generator. So we've been doing some price comparisons and are currently in the process for bidding out a larger diesel generator to back up all of City Hall. The one we currently have that's in that building is 125 KW. So we put out some feelers to a seller, looking for around 300 KW. And our response was, well, we have a 400 KW that's even cheaper if y'all be interested. So it's cost savings of around $15,000 for larger. So that's, we currently have a bid out there right now. I'm going to be opening next week, just to put that forward. At the same time, we are overloading the transformer that feeds City Hall in the summer. It peaked last summer. We're on 112 KVA transformer. It peaked at 130 KVA demand. So we are overloading that transformer in the summer, knowing that we're going to be possibly expanding our head-end and adding the AC load for any backup power. We're starting this project, so I just wanted to bring it to you all that the bid was coming and we're going to be doing, if it's approved, doing that work. The total cost for us is about $90,000. That includes a generator, transformer, pads, some excavation work. And that way, the City Hall has enough backup power for any future project for the foreseeable future. So this is kind of more informational before the bid here in a couple of weeks.
Were you planning to put this in, this expansion, working towards this as far as implementing it into your cost factor, if you could?
Yep, we had discussed it between Tracy and the mayor. And we felt because it affects all departments, so across all five, six departments that are worked out at City Hall, the building fund that's in each department, it can be spread across all those and shouldn't be budget impacting.
Good enough.
Whereas probably on renovation, the burden of that will probably be by fire and electric and cable would be borne by that because those are the two that are probably going to actually be using that space and benefit from that renovation. Whereas electrical supply and the generator for backup supports all the operations at the halls.
So the power goes down, then I could still have lights?
Yes, on the side, on the side, ACs. We have a system, we have, I'll never forget, it was May of 2015, when our full substation went out for several hours. I ran to Lowe's to buy some portable AC units just to try and cool it down. We have huge, you know, 20-inch circular fans just to kind of keep it cool because there's millions of dollars worth of equipment that overheats very fast. So it's always been, so we remind, every major house are reminded how it overheats very quickly. And this last ice storm kind of brought it back to our attention. So we're trying to, you know, the generator, it's been sitting out there for about 20 years. So we're hoping that by more than doubling or tripling its capacity and a new one, it will set us up for at least another 20 to 30 years.
Eric, were we able to procure the option to purchase that larger generator at the cheaper price?
After the committee meetings, when I told them that we were interested in it, they preserved it for us up until going through the bid process because of this price. So they, the seller said you talked to the higher-ups and reserved it. But I told them that we'd have to go through the official bid process to open it up for anybody else that we want to bid on a 300 KW diesel. But they are ineffectively reserving for us.
You ready to open this next week?
Next Wednesday.
So yeah, I guess there'll be a good chance we might be able to get, you know, the bid is certainly not over or higher. So if we get higher, a bigger generator for less money, that would certainly be within the bid specification. So we're hopeful for that.
So no other surprises as far as other residual effects that we may have on not matching equipment or anything with, that we discussed in committee?
No, certainly no problems. But we might have to do a study on it to make sure, but everything's, you know, it's two separate panels and there's 80% of City Hall's backed up. So we might do a little bit more of a study to narrow that down, work it out to the panel level so far.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Eric. Anybody have any other questions there? All right. Under new business, we're going to have to make a slight change to our municipal order for the safety, I mean, excuse me, for the committee structure because in the water, wastewater committee, I inadvertently had four councilmen listed in that committee, which would comprise a forum. So we had to reduce that committee by one councilman. So that's the main reason we're bringing this back for an amended vote on the municipal order M 2019 dash 02, which is the committee structure for this coming year.
Mayor, on the electric and cable, didn't we change the, they were going to meet too?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other position that doesn't exist?
So do we need to read this? I guess we do.
Would you, do you want me to read it in its entirety or just the paragraphs were changing, Mayor? I'm happy to do either.
I think that would be sufficient.
To just read one?
We read it at the last meeting, so I guess paragraph four and five is where the two changes.
And there's also a, eight.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't get to add some eights now, maybe. That's on the next page.
Mayor, do you want to share with Councilman Hart the reasoning for your selection of her removal from that?
Well, I think you had had five committee assignments and most of the other ones had four, so.
Perfectly fine.
I didn't ask you whether you were on page four or five. I thought since you had five.
You looked busy.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, Audrey, if you want to read the paragraphs that have the changes.
Paragraph four, that there is hereby named an electric and cable TV committee of the city council whose members shall be Chairman, Councilman David Domes, Councilman Roland Williams, Councilman Franklin Hibbs the fourth, and the city electrical engineer, the city systems engineer, and the electric superintendent, and shall have regularly scheduled meetings on the strike first, insert second, Tuesday of January, April, July, and October each year at strike 4 p.m., insert 5 p.m., in the city council's chamber located on the second floor of 116 Northwood Street. Paragraph number five, that there is hereby named a water and wastewater committee of the city council whose members shall be Chairman, Councilman Bill Sheckles, strike, Councilman Betty Hart, Councilman David Domes, Councilman Franklin Hibbs the fourth, the administrative engineer and the city civil engineer, and that the water and wastewater committee shall have meetings as needed. And then paragraph eight, that there is hereby named an annexation committee of the city council whose members shall be Chairman, Councilman Betty Hart, Councilman David Domes, Councilman Bill Sheckles, strike, the director of public works and engineering, the human resource director, and the city civil engineer. That the annexation committee shall have meetings as needed.
Okay, then I guess we need a motion then to approve the changes to municipal order number M 2019 dash 002, in paragraphs four, five, and eight that were read by our city attorney.
So, Mayor?
We have a tie.
Go ahead.
I heard right.
Councilman Hibbs, and then a second of the Councilman Domes.
Can I point out that I did not amend Municipal Order 2019 dash 01 because there were three changes. I did an entirely new one, so it's number 02, so just so that the record and the municipal reflect that this is, it's a new municipal order, not technically an amended one.
Municipal order that has changed to Municipal Order 2019 01.
Correct.
Thank you, Mary. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hall in favor, city council members saying aye. Hall opposed, motion is carried. All right, city council members' comments? Anybody have anything to report? Most of you went to some training last week at KLC. Anybody got anything they would like to talk about?
It was great training, but we were told what happens at KLC stays at KLC.
It was really beneficial.
It really was.
You know, I wasn't afforded the opportunity to go because I was appointed in my first term. So I was appointed after that training would have had place. It was, it was a pleasure and a privilege to be involved in. And it was, there was a lot of things to learn. A lot of it was city attorney stuff, you know, you had to snooze through, but.
Your birdie's city attorney.
Yeah. So, but there was a lot of really good information, and I think all of us took a lot, a lot away from it.
Well, the new council people got a chance to meet a lot of people that they'll have an opportunity to deal with hopefully.
You introduced everybody there before.
I think Councilman Domes, he gave a city councilman from Springfield a ride back because her ride over had to go babysit for a grandparent. Lisa Hayden drove her up and couldn't drive her back, so she hitchhiked with David to Willisburg exit and called a ride to rest her place. That's a good way to network and working with our local neighbor in the city. I spoke to Lisa Hayden today, she told me about that.
We spent a lot of time with the city and the mayor, Bluefield, too, and his new city clerk.
That's right, he sat at our table all three days.
And that was another benefit of it was to networking with other people across the state, other county people.
I think probably 40% of the attendees were new council people or new city officials, which is a good about 10%. It's interesting to say.
That's what the academy is about.
Yeah, it's great. Well, you get a chance to network with other people. The cities are sizes, they learn a lesson, and share the experiences that we all have. It's always good networking.
Okay, any other comments from the council members? Okay, we had some cemetery deeds, and I know we have a recusal. Councilman Domes against wife purchasing some graves. So we have cemetery deeds then, four for David and Dana Domes. We have one for Joan Clemmons, four graves for David and Regina Avis, two graves for James Crowver Phillips, Crowver and Karen Phillips, two graves for James and Mary Sattles, two graves for Thomas and Dorothy Pike, two graves for Michael and Karen Lyon, two graves for Stephen and, Stephen J. and Mary J. Hagan, two graves for William Michael and Mary Janice Burbus, three graves for Brenda Ford, and then one grave for Janice Livers. We can approve them by unanimous consent. And we have Councilman Domes going to see. Is there any announcements, anyone have any announcements that need to be brought from the group tonight? Seeing none, then I ask a motion in for a gentleman. Motion, Councilman Butler, you have a second. And Councilman Hart, all in favor, city council members saying aye. All opposed, we are adjourned.